I'd like to welcome everyone to the Anacortes City Council meeting of February 12th, 2024. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Franciac, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Fantini.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. Walters.
Here.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Here.
Ms. Moulton.
Here.
Mr. McDougall.
Here.
Ms. Hubick.
Here.
Thank you.
Do you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, neither is it wrong.
Okay, next were announcements, committee reports. Just a couple of quick announcements from me. I'd like to thank Dakota Creek Industries for hosting a wonderful christening this morning. Allison Creek was christened. Council members Moulton, Walters, and Cleland McGrath were there as well. And again, proudly built right here in Anacortes, and it's a ship headed to Valdez in March as a spill response vessel. So again, they do great work there. Next, R Avenue, again, still on track. I'll let you, we'll get to hear from our Public Works Director a little later, but we're still on track for R Avenue, anticipated opening R Avenue the first week of March. I know it's really challenging now with the left turn southbound onto R from 34th Street makes it challenging and is pushing a lot of traffic to commercial. So appreciate everybody's patience as we significantly improve that corridor. And then finally, just a reminder, the 17th, which is Saturday, Adventure Day at the library. So 2:00 to 6:00 p.m., I think, is the, are the times there. So again, lots of information on the website, very popular event. So if you're so inclined, you can enjoy Adventure Day at the library. All right, next up is 3A Housing Affordability and Community Services Committee Report.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. The HACs committee met on February 8th, and it was council members Cleland McGrath, Council Member Walters, and myself. And we discussed the upcoming addition of A-Town is Our Town, which comes out twice a year to all of our mailboxes. And we'll be doing a section on housing. So we started talking about the outline of what we'll do there. So something to look forward to. We reviewed the January outreach report from the Anacortes Family Center, which was very illuminating. And they, the AFC helped lots of different people with everything from gas cards to housing to driver's licenses to birth certificates. So these very fundamental needs that people don't always have easy access to. So the AFC, that's, that's something they're providing along with all their other services, too. So it's always very heartening to look at that, at that report and see what a difference that that team is, is making in cooperation with our fire department and, you know, all the, the overlap there. And so we're very pleased with what's happening there. And I believe that the dine out to end homelessness, that was actually that same evening. And I have not heard numbers, but I imagine it was a big success. I heard that, yeah, so the restaurants were just, just full. And so really great to see our community turn out that way and support this great organization. There, we talked a little bit about North Star, the county initiative to improve conditions for people countywide. And we know a little bit about that, but we're always wanting to learn more. So we have a little homework to do there. And we would also love it if their meeting, their leadership meetings were open to the public, too, so that we could all, we could all attend. And that's it.
Okay, next up is Planning Committee.
Yeah, Mayor Miller.
Oh, Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Thank you. And just to tag on to the family centers, dine out and shopping to end homelessness, a big thank you. They actually, one of the components is, well, there's a couple of components. One is the, the businesses that participate either donate a portion of their sales or a flat amount to the family center. But then the other component is they sell raffle tickets. So my understanding is they actually sold $22,000 in raffle tickets for that event. So really awesome and going to a good, good, good need. Planning, we had a planning committee meeting just before at 5:00 tonight. And we were kind of talked, had a free form conversation, talked a little bit about tree preservation and needing to do a master plan for that. And then we talked somewhat about the fact that we're going to start working on our comprehensive plan, and we've got a grant for $125,000 to work on that. Then we also have another grant specifically tagged for climate change, and that's $500,000. And kind of figuring out how each component kind of will fall into those respectable pots of money and making sure that we are doing the correct outreach, but also billing it as the Department of Commerce wants us to see it billed accurately. So kind of understanding how that is all going to work out. And you'll get a lot more information on it. It appears that there's going to be some, there will, there'll be quite a bit of time for public participation. So please be on the lookout for that. And then there'll also be some kind of a climate policy advisory team that's based on commerce guidance. So be on the lookout if you're interested and have some expertise in that. And that has not quite been defined what their, what their goals and will, goals will be, but that's coming down. And I think will be, there'll be more information at the February 28th Planning Committee meeting. So stay tuned. And I think that's about all we discussed.
Next up, Public Safety Committee did not meet. So 3D is Port City Liaison Committee. Mayor Miller. Mr. Walters.
The Port City Liaison Committee, which is three council members, the mayor, staff, and two port commissioners, and the port executive director and their staff, met last Tuesday, I think it was. We talked about a number of things, including just updates on what the city is doing, R Avenue, the wastewater treatment plant outfall, the Maritime National Heritage Area designation that several of us are going to go to an event for. We also talked about our West Basin Event Space Proposal, and we probably spent most of the meeting talking about that. Then on the port side, they had not very much time left after we'd completed that discussion, but they gave us an update on the electric vehicle charging stations that are being installed in front of Anthony's Restaurant in the port's parking lot. Notably, those electric vehicle charging stations will include what I believe to be the first Level 3 charging stations on Fidalgo Island and a couple of Level 2 charging stations, and there's room for expansion. They gave us a little bit of an update on the executive director recruitment plan and their work to lobby the legislature in Olympia. And then finally, we talked sort of conceptually about how affordable housing measures might impact the marina. And I think that was just a very high level conversation about livaboards in the marina and how the port is fairly constrained on what, what they allow there. And I think they're not inclined to do more than that. And it wasn't, wasn't, there was no suggestion from us that they do anything differently. On the event space idea, we talked mostly about what is the next step forward. And so we had settled on, I think, a, a process for conceptual design of an event space at Cap Santa Marina, across the street from the Dog Park, 9th and R. Port and City would engage in that, not to get to even a 30% design, but a conceptual design of that facility, formalize some consensus on size, number of seats, those types of parameters, and what the other project requirements are. We laid a bunch of those out in our memo from a couple of, of weeks ago. But that is just the opinion of three council members, and so the port would participate, and other groups in the community, nonprofits would participate. And then we would, we would move that interlocal agreement forward to the city council and port for, for approval. That approval would take place prior to doing the work, and that conceptual design work would be probably 60 to 90 days. So our, our concept here is to fast track the process, to be able to get to a place where we could have a replacement event center near term, but also to do it in a methodical fashion. So that first interlocal would commit very little money, and it would be only conceptual design. Assuming we liked the outcome of that process, we would then propose an all, a second interlocal to go off to the races. We are next scheduled to meet is the Port City Liaison Committee, February 23rd, which is a Friday. That's in advance of our regularly scheduled meeting so that we can hash out more terms of that initial interlocal agreement.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
Just to tag on to that a little bit, because I heard from a lot of folks after the, the article in the paper came out, there was also discussion during that meeting that there will be some kind of public meeting for a vetting process, not a brainstorming session, but a, a vetting process of that plan. So just for those that are interested in the public, there will be an option to participate in that.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
Just wanted to elaborate just a little bit on the hard work that sometimes goes into each of the processes that comes before council. Truly, we have one of the best city councils I have ever seen anywhere, and the commitment by individuals to bringing things forward has been absolutely stellar. Part of this process for event space began many moons ago, and part of that was the push, not only as I'm sure the port will talk about at some point, but the push to realize that there was a challenge to losing the event space. The good news is that the port and the city are willing to work together to find a solution for whatever that is. And trying to determine what that is, is what it really is all about. Now, with that said, there are certain processes that has to be brought forward, I believe, to the entire council for us to be able to not only weigh in, but also, you know, haggle out what, what we can do. And I love the idea of when the port and the city gets together and we sort of meet as a unified front to figure out how do we do things. So I'm looking forward to that being a part of this process. And what it will allow us to do is step forward for the public, because clearly, this is something that the public needs. And I believe that the hard work done by the port I've seen over the last many years has been just stellar. But the city's commitment to this process and to you is part of that. So there are going to be some times where we're going to have some additional questions that may come from outside of the committee and maybe even on this panel. But what I want you to know is that we're working it out. Don't be afraid to submit your suggestions to us and your ideas, and they will be considered. So I'm thankful for the hard work and where we are right now, because truly, a solution, I believe, is on the horizon. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do appreciate working with the port on this project and the idea behind these interlocal, although it seems a little bit bureaucratic maybe to the public, but it's, that's the opportunity where we can have full commission and full council discussions as we move through this process. So pretty excited about the process, but a little more to go. All right, next up is 3E Finance Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleland.
Yep. The Finance Committee met on February 8th and really kind of did a deep dive of the first agenda item, 6A, which is ordinance 4068, just amending the budget. So I think that Steve, Mr. Hoagland will do a better job going into detail, but he was able to articulate and, and clarify some of the unknowns that were, the questions that were asked last week. So I feel pretty good about his presentation at this point. The one thing I did want to say that I want everyone to hear is the fact that in 2024, the city spent $372,000 on sidewalks. And I think that's an incredible amount of money. It's necessary. We have a lot, huh? Oh, 320,000? No. 2023, I'm sorry. Thank you. 2023, we spent $372,000. And there's a ton more of work to be done, but I, that's still a huge chunk of money out of our budget to put towards sidewalks. We know, we hear from folks every day, the challenges of using either sidewalks that have become obstructed from tree roots or don't have ADA accessibility that they should in this day and age. So we will continue to work towards that. But it's still, we made, we did a big chunk this last year. So I'm pleased with that.
All right. Any other announcements or committee reports that I may have missed? Okay, we'll move to item four, which is public comment. This is an opportunity for any member of the public that wishes to address the city council, anything that's not on our agenda. So if you're here to talk about the ordinance or the public works update, you can wait till then. But if you're, want to talk about anything else, this is your time. I didn't have anybody signed up. Okay, looking online. All right, we will move on to item five, 5A and B, our consent agenda. Council.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
I move we approve the consent agenda items 5A and B.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Young, second by Mr. McDougall to approve consent agenda items A and B. All in favor, signified by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Onto item six, 6 and A, Other Business. This is ordinance 4068, amending the 2023 budget. This is a discussion item with possible action. And we know Mr. Hoagland is ready to go.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council and members of the audience. So we went through this to begin with last week. And there, I think the questions that I took away were all related to the facilities budget, which are these two expenditure line items here, professional services and repairs and maintenance. I wanted to, I went back and did an audit of those bars numbers and wanted to go through that real quickly with council. So this is, I won't go through the, all of this, but this is a download out of our accounting system for that, that expense bars number for professional services. And you can see across the, across the top here, these numbers, 101, 103, 401, 440, and 501. Those represent different fund numbers for invoices that could have been allocated to those particular funds. So Fund 101 is parks, 103 is library, 401 is water, 440 is sewer, and 501 is equipment rental. So the 401, 4, and 440 are both utilities that are strictly expected to have self sustaining finances. Fund 501 is equipment rental, and that is generally treated like a utility as well, because it collects its resources from the other funds that it's servicing. So it's effectively a utility for the, the government itself. So I, I went through, looked at each of these individual invoices and tried to identify ones that were applicable to primarily the utilities. And then I just marked the amounts in the, in the column and then summed up these columns. So this is what I came up with. The original budget for this bars number was $77,004. The end of year actuals is $322,000. And I identified $123,000 that could be reallocated to other funds. So that's, it's actually the sum of these three funds, which is water, sewer, and ERNR. The additional expenditures in funds 101 and 103, I didn't plan on moving those, because those are governmental funds that are funded primarily with taxes, just like the general fund. So it's, you know, kind of six, one half dozen of the other, so to, so to speak. But the utilities and ERNR are definitely expenditures that should be moved out of, out of the facilities budget and into those, into those utilities. So that's a total of $123,000. So back up to this column, if you remove that $123,000 total from the current actuals, that leaves a balance of $199,000 in actual expenditures. When compared to the original budget of $77,000, that puts it into an over budget condition of $122,007. And that's the amount of budget amendment that I'm requesting you consider tonight. When you flip over to, I'll flip over to the-
Mayor Miller. Mr. Young.
Thank you. Don't mean to interrupt you, Mr. Hoagland. I know that you're probably going to get to it at some point. You, I was looking at the budget adjustment request and the professional services. And I know you quantified part of it, the 123,0317, but the 122,000 that was remaining from professional services, I noticed in your explanation at the bottom, it was several things that came up, like the WT Preston cost more than anticipated, you know, some stuff in the facilities department, so on. Is that the reason for the over, under budgeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted you to elaborate just a little bit on that, if you would. And I didn't know if that was later in your presentation or not.
No, thank, yeah, thank you for that. That's, it's a great point. And that's, as I was going through these expenditures, and again, the detail is, it's, it's, as I identified those, those invoices that could have been reallocated, in reviewing the, just general review of all of those expenditures, I, I did want to make clear, it was, there weren't any unusual charges or certainly no nefarious charges. It was just all routine activity, but there was a higher level of that routine activity. So a couple of things that, that popped out were things that I, I noted here that were, you know, easy to kind of get my hands around and make a note of. But there was a lot of just general mechanical work that was done on HVAC systems, boilers, things of that nature, electrical work that was done around the city. So that was, that was really kind of the, kind of the, the sense of it.
Thank you. I just wanted that to sort of come out, because that was part of what I highlighted in the ordinance. That was sort of explained in it. And I just thought it was important, not just for us, but for the public, to understand it a little bit better. Thank you.
Yep, absolutely. Thank you. So this is, so this is kind of the bottom line, then, of the professional services budget, requesting $122,007 in budget amendment, and that would be supported through REIT transfer in, back into the general fund. The other bars number that I did an audit of was the repairs, the repairs line item. And I did exactly the same thing, just ran through those invoices, looked at the detail, and identified which ones could be reallocated back out to another fund. So in this case, now, this is the repairs budget, or I'm sorry, the repairs bars expense line. So we had expenditures in Fund 101 and 103, again, that's parks, library, at a total of nearly $12,000 and nearly $16,000. Fund 108 is the Washington Park Fund, and that's the fund that we did the Washington Park residence and shop re-roof in. I'm sorry. Washington, the Washington, that project was paid for out of the facilities budget, but could have been paid for out of this Fund 108. And then Fund 501, again, is the ERNR fund. And there was nearly $16,000 in expenditures that was due to work on the fence out there around the facility. This $15,827, I will, I will do a journal entry to move that expense from facilities into ERNR. The, the rest of it, as it stands, at $171,000 is what I would request a budget amendment for, the vast majority of that being $113,000 that was spent on the Washington Park residence and shop re-roof. And then all of that would be, that entire budget amendment would be supported through a REIT transfer back into the general fund. So I, I did put a worksheet together that is in the republished package that summarizes that information in this worksheet here. There's the $122,007, and there's the $171,000. I know there's a lot of material there, a lot of detail. Be happy to answer any questions that might be remaining.
Mayor Miller. Mr. Walters.
Mr. Hoagland, is it fair to say that the adjustments that you propose making here in this calendar year will simply be made as accounting entries when the services are incurred to the appropriate funds?
In the, in the current year, in 2024?
Right.
Yeah. So I, if I understand what you're asking, will we have a tighter controls over the expenditures and have more timely communication on those expenditures? Answer is yes. Public Works and myself have already had a couple of meetings about that very thing and making sure we're timely in our monitoring and communication.
My question isn't specifically about, you know, changing procedure. It's, is it fair to say that the ordinary procedure would, would be for when these invoices come in, that they be billed against the funds that you're now proposing to move the expense against, so that we don't see this work after the fact? It occurs when the invoice comes in, is paid?
Yeah, that's absolutely true.
And in this case, that, that step simply didn't happen. They just all got billed to facilities instead of to the other funds?
That's correct.
Okay. And then for the Washington Park expense, the re-roof, you're proposing in this amendment to bill it to Fund 108? Is that right?
No, actually, so it's, it's currently billed to Fund, the general fund, 001. And my proposal in this case would be to increase the budget amendment and then allocate REIT resources to pay for that. It-
So to continue paying for it out of 001?
Yes. So the, the, the original project during the budget process was budgeted in Fund 108. That's the, the parks. Sorry, I made an error earlier. Let me backtrack just momentarily. So Fund 108 is actually the parks' construction fund. When we went through the budget process last year, that's where we identified this work would be done for the Washington Park re-roof. When the invoice actually came in, it was billed, or it was paid for out of Fund 001, the facilities budget. So the budget amendment, as I have drafted, would leave it in the general fund, increase the budget, and allocate REIT resources. And this is for, this is for the Washington Park residence and shop.
So a little from column A, a little from column B there. But I guess, at the end of the day, you're proposing to pay for that re-roof out of REIT, which is a limited resource that we can use for quite a few things, including streets. Why not pay for it out of the Washington Park Fund?
Yeah, it's a good question. The Washington Park Fund, that is an eligible expense to pay for it out of the Washington Park Fund. So there, not all of our parks have their own accounting funds. The Washington Park Fund does, because traditionally, it has supported itself through user fees at the park. From time to time, it might need an additional shot in the arm with property tax, but generally, it had supported itself until COVID. And then since the, kind of the start of more staycations, the Washington Park Fund has, has really accelerated in its financial position. So it's, I guess a long way to say, it's, it is a healthy fund from a financial perspective.
And since its fund balance is 307,000, and this is a $100,000 expense, and that fund is the more restrictive revenue source, shouldn't we pay for this out of that instead of REIT? REIT being the fund that we are concerned running out of, because there are many demands on REIT, because it's less restrictive.
That's true, yes. And that is, that is an eligible expense from the Washington Park Fund.
Would that have any impact on Washington Park Fund's ability to maintain a positive balance throughout the year? Does it need that cash?
It would still, it would still have sufficient revenues to meet the- It would still, it would still have sufficient revenues to meet the, our budgetary policies. We generally expect to have at least two months' worth of cash, and the remaining cash balance would exceed that expectation.
So it seems to me that's an opportunity to save some REIT that we should take up.
Yeah, it's, Washington, Washington Park is the more restrictive fund, because those cash, that cash can only be used for purposes within the park. REIT is eligible for a variety of parks construction and public works projects, so it is a more restrictive resource.
I've got the asterisk items, so I'll have to ask any members of the public who wish to weigh in on this detailed budget discussion. All right, council, any additional questions for Mr. Hoagland?
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Fantini?
I just had a question to Mr., to kind of Mr. Walters' question, why did you go this way as opposed to using the Washington Park Fund, and like, is that something that, since it's only for that, you know, for Washington Park, like, is there something that we're expecting to happen there to use that fund for, or?
I know that the Parks Department does have plans for things that they'd like to do at the Washington Park, so I can't, I can't answer that specifically, but I do know that they have plans in repaving some of the areas out there, expanding the paved areas, there, I suspect a variety of projects out there. But to your point, your question, for a number of years, Washington Park just kind of barely held its own, it didn't have robust cash balances, this has been kind of a new development over the last several years, so it just, maybe it's a paradigm-
It's not an area that we normally looked at to fund these types of projects, I guess, that's the-
Yeah, so traditionally, when we have parks projects like that, we do a variety of projects, including Washington Park every year, that we have traditionally funded with REIT, and it was just, I guess, that practice of relying on the Washington Park cash for operations rather than for, you know, significant maintenance projects such as this.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Young.
Yeah, speaking of that, though, you know, I think that that was a very fair question about it, and I also think that as Finance Director, too, part of that is juggling one or the other based upon as best as your crystal ball can look and see into the future of what might or might not be needed. If I am correct, Washington Park's love by so many people has been increasing year over year over year over year over year, and there are things that we have not necessarily, just looking toward that future, you know, my personal concern has been, sometimes parks can be over-loved, and, you know, and I think that that's one of the things of having a healthy fund, to be able to fund some of this stuff to come, come, and I'm sort of looking at that as well, so, yeah, no, I totally get it, I think Mr. Walters brought a fair question, of course, Mr. Fantini asked for the explanation, and, you know, I'm kind of riding on your wisdom about it, and so, anyway, I just wanted to point out that I think our parks are being adequately loved, sometimes abundantly so, and I think that the challenge for the parks will be to, how do we keep up with that, and then keep things interesting with the limited amount of funds that we do have? So at some point, I'm sure we're going to need to take a hard look at, you know, what we're funding and what we're not, and how do we preserve the forests such that it can continue to be used by everyone and not over-loved? Thank you.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. McDougal.
Just a quick question, on the existing REIT balance, I may, maybe I missed it, and I apologize, but do you know roughly what the balance is within, you know, a million?
Yeah, yeah, we, so we ended fiscal year 2023 with roughly five million in cash, and of that, roughly two million is obligated, so we should have a balance pretty close to three million. It might be slightly less, maybe two point nine-
So this is five percent of that, you know, that three million roughly is what we're talking about? I know that real estate sales may be slowed down for the last twelve months, but do we have line of sight, like, that's projected to kind of rebound over the next twelve months? Like, basically what I'm getting at is, does REIT look like it's under any threat over the next twelve months, or is it looking fine?
Yeah, it's a, it's a great question, that's, I wish I had a little more clear crystal ball.
Yeah.
So as we, as we looked at last week, the REITs, real estate excise tax receipts have, over the last, the final quarter in 2023, declined a little bit, and I will, I can say, I checked today, the January REIT revenues are up slightly compared to January of last year, so, you know, hopefully that's a good sign that things have rebounded.
Okay, and I think most indicators would suggest that we're not looking at a big kind of real estate crash, so, thank you.
And what, I guess one thing, if I'm, if I may, I wish I would have thought about this earlier, when I was putting this budget together, budget amendment together to begin with, and just kind of had a broader conversation with Parks Department and the, and the mayor, is it's a good question Mr. Walters brings up.
Mr. Walters?
Well, and my concern is, you know, we do have four hundred thousand dollars worth of REIT that we're drawing from in this budget amendment, meaning unanticipated REIT expenditures in the amount of four hundred thousand dollars, and some of these we can't get away from, but some we can, and REIT being the number one reliable source of funding for our pavement maintenance program, I mean, we have a lot to catch up on, on our pavement maintenance program, it's very expensive, and other sources of revenue have declined, so unless we want to fill that in with general fund, which is the least constrained fund in terms of allowed expenses, which would be the opposite of our financial policies, it seems like saving a hundred thousand dollars worth of REIT here is a good step, and other opportunities to save REIT, we should be looking at whenever we can.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Bolton?
Thank you. I can see why Washington Park Funds weren't looked at immediately, because they're not usually in this kind of position, but since they are, I would be willing to rethink using REIT and saving that for, for other things that will come about, and then if Washington Park in the future does need more money for REIT, we could take it then, but if we do truly have such a healthy Washington Fund, Park balance, I'd be in favor of using it in this instance.
Yeah, I think, I think we got that, but there's a, we'll have to bring this back, right?
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Cleveland-McGrath?
I mean, yeah, that's what I was going to say, is I think it needs to go back to the Parks Committee, because I wouldn't want to spend that money without at least a discussion by the Parks Committee to understand what those funds, what plans those funds had, if they had any, before we make a major decision like that, because while we've had four years of, of real growth in that specific fund, we shouldn't necessarily assume it's going to continue, and if there are some major projects, I would want to be aware of what we're giving up before we make that decision. Is it possible to wait another week, or do you need this budget amendment completed? What's the timeline?
Yeah, no, our, our year-end is, we won't close 2023 year-end for some time, so holding it another week is not a problem. I'd be happy to work with the Parks Department, could even-
Yeah, and I appreciate, even though I know the Parks Director's in the room, I'm not going to put him on the spot to come up here, and I appreciate council also thinking that way, so, but yeah, we can, we can take a look at this. Is there anything else, though, that council wants to address with this, so we, when we bring it back, it'll be ready to go?
Yeah, good question.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
I think the other items, with maybe, maybe a couple of exceptions, but the other items are largely well-explained, and I appreciate Mr. Hoagland bringing forward the explanations, some of them don't even require an explanation, you know, so for example, where Washington Park generates more revenue, and they have to generate more expense in order to sustain that, that revenue that's coming in, that's a great problem to have, and it has no impact on anything else. In other instances, like the skate park, we made a decision that we were fully informed about, because the skate park is important to the kids in town, to get that skate park going, even though we knew we didn't have quite enough money for it. So I don't have any issues with the, the rest of the line items listed here, and I appreciate Mr. Hoagland's explanation. The one other thing I'd say about REIT, though, is that, you know, you've got all these buckets of money, and some of them have more constraints than others in what they can be spent on. If we spend down a fund, and it has needs that we decide, you know, need to be, projects that need to be built, or, or maintenance that needs to be done, the REIT, which is capable of funding all of those things and more, will still be available. So following our, our sort of basic financial policy of spending the most restrictive funds first, we preserve options for the future, and that's, I think, important to us.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, all right, we will move on to item 6B, this is Resolution 3146, 2024 Lodging Tax Advisory Committee Appointments, this is an action item, and I have staff contacts on here, but I'll let, well, I'll let, I'll let Mr. Coleman introduce, and probably the LTAC Chair will probably weigh in as well.
Thank you, Mayor, council, members of the public. So tonight, we're here to talk about the 2024 Lodging Tax Advisory Committee Appointments, just as a primer on what LTAC is, the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee is established to help direct the city and make recommendations on how to spend lodging tax funds. So lodging tax funds are tax collected by hotels and Airbnb-type short-term rentals that the city can use to attract tourism, and specifically, specifically for things that, like, bring heads in bed, so the idea of the lodging tax is to collect money from people that come into town and use tourist facilities, the lodging, and then direct it towards creating and sustaining other things such as, that bring people into town, such as events, such as event spaces, the Chamber of Commerce receives money from us because they are our marketing arm, so that is what the LTAC is all about, or the lodging tax is about, and the LTAC is the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, it's a voluntary body that recommends how the city should spend that collected lodging tax. Throughout the, at a certain point in the year, we accept lodging tax applications, so that's the people that want to use the money, that's largely nonprofits, and apply to the city, explaining exactly how they're going to spend those funds, you know, very detailed, how many people are, they intend to be bringing into town with their event, and why, the justification for why they are worthy of, are limited lodging tax funds. And the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee is the body that reviews that in detail, and then makes recommendations to the council, and the council, as you recall, because you just did this a few weeks ago, spends the money, they follow the recommendations from the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, or ask the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee to do more work, and come back with different recommendations, every once in a while that may happen. So the, the Anacortes Municipal Code requires that the LTAC be appointed each year, so here we are in the new year, so we had put out for, advertised for Lodging Tax Advisory Committee members. Through our Talent Bank process, which the public might, might or might not know about, that's our, if you go to our website and you find our Talent Bank, that's where you can apply for any volunteer opportunities at the city, whether it be the Planning Commission, the Arts Commission, Lodging Tax Advisory Commission, so look for that on our website, there's a little plug for the Talent Bank, we're always looking for engaged and involved people to volunteer at the city. So this year, we, at the end of the 2023 cycle, we were down two Lodging Tax Advisory Committee members, one of the hoteliers had sold his business, so was no longer available, and another person was no longer working in, for an organization that is involved with receiving money. So I should probably step back and describe, the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee needs to be seven people, the Chair is one, is one city council member, and this year it is Council Member Ryan Walters, and then three of the members need to be from organizations that collect the lodging tax, and then the other three are from groups that could use, that are eligible to spend the lodging tax funds, so that's typically nonprofits or other groups that are involved in events that would be using lodging tax. So after our application process this year, we were looking for two people, we received seven applications for people interested in the LTAC, all of those applications are included in the council memo with this, with this item today. What we're, what's being recommended through the resolution attached to this is, that's Resolution 3146, which would establish the seven, appoint the six people to the board, as well as Councilman Walters, is remain, keeping the five, sorry, there's four remaining from last year's that demonstrated an interest in continuing on the Lodging Tax Advisory Board, that those members are Mark Leone of Cap Santa, the Cap Santa Hotel, Travis Sherman of the Majestic Inn, and then the two-year members from groups authorized to receive funding are Anastasia Brennick, who is with, I think it's P. Flagno, correct me if I'm wrong.
Anacortes Pride.
You're correct.
Yeah, I, Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
I chatted with her this afternoon, she is also associated with the Anacortes Pride.
Is still with the Anacortes Pride, okay, great, and, and Summer Carter with the Anacortes Music Project. Through this resolution, there's, the two additional people this year are recommended are Jessica Ferguson, who's the owner of the Nantucket Inn, to be representative of a business that collects the tax, and Lynn Jordan of Friends of the Forest is recommended to be pointed as representative of an organization that's eligible to receive the funding, so that is all staff has on this presentation.
All right, well, thank you for that, and I just got to, once again, make a plug for our Talent Bank application, and I appreciate everybody who, who put in their request, as you can see, if you look at the packet, certainly for council, you can see that we find opportunities for folks that want to volunteer, we can't, we can't run the city, actually, without these volunteer groups, so we can usually find a spot for you, and again, much appreciation to the folks that are willing to continue to serve on, on these various committees, including LTAC. But with that, I think I'll turn it over to the LTAC Chair, Mr. Walters.
Thank you. Mayor Pretem Molten and I reviewed the applications, recommended reappointment of the four members that remained from last year's LTAC, and then the two additional people who you just mentioned, we reviewed that with both the Planning Director and Mayor Miller, and then put together this list. We also included, for council's edification, the members who are not recommended, notably, you know, no residency requirement applies, but we did try to hew to the provisions of AMC Chapter 2.48, and the state law, which requires you'd actually be participating in some kind of activity that is eligible to receive lodging tax, or be a hotelier, or motelier, if motelier is a word, or other entity that generates lodging tax. So those are our recommendations, and that's what we put in the draft resolution, this is up for council's decision for appointment, so you are free to make changes, and all of the materials are in the packet, so you can review them if you want.
All right, so that's a good segue, so over to council for any comments, questions. So over to council for any comments, questions. Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
Having been Chair for the last year in particular, you know, it really is a challenge in some ways trying to figure out how do you maximize the talent? And then how do you get the most out that benefits our community? We truly have an extraordinary community of talented people looking for something to do and how they can participate in this wonderful city that we have. And so, you know, I commend not only the staff itself for the hard work that they did when I was Chair, but also the collaboration that comes forward with Mr. Walters, Ms. Molten, and the mayor to put forward these names. So I am very much in support of this list. Thoroughly thought, I'm sure. And, you know, I'm very supportive, but I'm gonna turn it back to council before I make any motion. Thank you.
Any other comments, council?
Well, there you have it. Then if, if okay, I, I move to adopt resolution thirty-one forty-six approving the reappointment of four existing Lodging Tax Advisory Committee members and appointing Jessica Ferguson and Lynn Jordan as new members of the Anacortes Lodging Tax Advisory Committee.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Young, a second by Ms. Molten to approve resolution thirty-one forty-six. Any additional discussion? Mr. Franci, I could take the vote, please.
Ms. DeYoung?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Molten?
Yes.
Mr. McDougall?
Yes.
Ms. Hubick?
Yes.
Mr. Fantini?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thanks. We're on to item number six C. This is Public Works twenty twenty-four Department Update, and this is, of course, open for public comment. So we'll let Mr. Raym load his PowerPoint presentation, and now it's all you.
There we go. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just want to make sure, Councilmember Hubick, can you see the presentation online?
Not yet, no, sir.
Coming up. There we go.
We're up now.
How about now?
Looks good. Perfect, thank you.
Okay, good. All right, well, good evening. This is, I'm trying to do this in ten minutes or so, so I'm gonna try to fly through it. If you guys want to interrupt me too, I'm, I'm okay, just on the fly. This is the Public Works Department twenty twenty-four update. I'm the volunteer that went first, so, and I haven't seen an update from other departments here in City of Anacortes in my life, so we're gonna just wing it here and hopefully it's enjoyable. So just a quick presentation overview, the city mission as well as the department values. We'll go over those, the organization, kind of a brief overview, division activities, kind of what we do each division. There's, there's eight different divisions, so hang in there with me. I'll, I'll try to go pretty quickly and we can go back and look at the, look at those. And then the twenty-two, twenty twenty-four division goals. So this is the mission statement. I was a little surprised, the, the department members within my department didn't know what the mission statement was. So, so just reiterate it here. The mayor did add a few, I think, great additions to it. But our mission is to maintain and improve the quality of life, reflecting community expectations through a focus on public participation and employees, mayor, council teamwork, a team dedicated to serving our citizens in a professional, efficient, and courteous manner. And these are actually, this is posted on a lot of buildings throughout the city. Some of them were inaccurate, so we're, we're working on getting those all pretty uniform. And I've talked about the department values before, but these are values that I instilled in the, in the department. These are true and dear to my heart, but I've gone over these with you before, but just to go over them real quick, commitment to public service, integrity, accountability, safety, and teamwork. And that picture there is our operations crew. They do water, sewer, I'm sorry, not water, sewer, stormwater, and streets maintenance. So this is the organizational chart of the entire department. There's seventy-seven and a half FTEs. We share one FTE with Finance. The total annual cost of this, without any capital facilities costs, just the actual operating cost is thirty-eight point two million a year. When I asked the, we had a brainstorming session to develop this presentation amongst supervisors and managers, and I asked them, you know, what words come to mind when you think of Public Works? And these are the ones that, that they gave me, which I think are, are fitting, and actually uniform across the other cities that I've, I've known over the years. Pride, quality of life for our customers, continuous improvement, consistency, reliability, teamwork, water, and then the good one was water quality doesn't take a holiday. So, and that, that speaks to not only the drinking water, but the wastewater system as well as stormwater system. One of the things that I think sometimes people are surprised about is how much pride is within the department. People really are in Public Works typically because they have a lot of pride in, in the work they do. And we'll leave it at that. The, the, this is, the, the little green boxes are kind of the division breakdown, just the only organizational change that I've made since I've been here, well, there's two, I guess. The, I pulled out stormwater. There's a, the stormwater to be its own division. The person that's the manager there was, is a manager, and so I had her go ahead and join the management team, like all the managers. And then engineering, while Logan Lee, he's our new city engineer, he doesn't have a lot of experience managing people, so I have taken the responsibility of kind of overseeing, like the supervision of all engineering technicians. And that we could maybe change in the future, but I think with one engineer on staff, I would rather him focus on engineering activities than managing people. So it's increased my workload a little bit, so I do apologize if it takes me longer to get two emails, but I think it's well worth it to, to really free up the engineer to do, to do, to do engineering. Okay, so now we're gonna go through these pie charts. So there's four slides with two pie charts on each, and I'm gonna kind of glaze over some of these. I'll just give a little detail where I feel council and the public would be interested in like, what does that mean? So operations, again, that was the slide ago, but it's, it's, it's three kind of distinct pieces. It's streets, stormwater, and sewer. And streets includes things like sweeping, potholes, paving, crack sealing, just so you have an idea of that. Storm, stormwater means basically cleaning the storm system, catch basins, ponds, treatment facilities that, you know, they're basically remove pollution. It's their last, last defense, I guess, to clean that pollution up before it gets out into the water bodies. So they have a very important job. Sewers, jetting, which is cleaning them so they don't clog. We camera them to look for cracks and, and issues. And then usually manhole maintenance is a pretty significant activity to make sure overtime manholes will settle, and that's the lid. And then if, you know, it can catch your rim on your car. I've bought a lot of Tesla rims over the years of doing this work, so it's important to keep those nice and, nice and level so, so they don't damage vehicles. Vegetation, just so you know, vegetation's a big deal for us. When, when it's growing in spring, it's really growing, and we have a lot of vegetation in the right of way, so we do our best to get to those. It's not, I would say Public Works doesn't really manicure it like your yard. It's more of a kind of industrial landscaping techniques because we have so much to do. I think the rest of those are pretty self-explanatory. So solid waste collections, just so the public's aware, so collections includes, we do roll offs, so if you have like, it's basically a truck trailer that we dump, you know, it's a big, big, big container. And, and so we, we do those. The big thing is the totes. Everybody puts totes out. We pick up the garbage. Waste Management comes and picks up the recycling. Oh, and the yard waste, the, the Waste Management does yard waste as well. And let's see, just so you get all the stuff here. Bulky collections, I was curious what that meant. Bulky collection is if you call the city and you have a couch or something like that that doesn't fit in your tote, we'll come pick it up, but there is a fee, but, but we do come pick it up for you, so you just have to call to get that service. The facilities, some of these pie charts are kind of interesting because they're really pretty concentric, as in this, the crew has a multiple of activities and they kind of do them fairly evenly across the board. I thought miscellaneous, I honed in on that and said, ask what, what is that? And so that's typically, an employee will call, there's something wrong that they want to get support from facilities to fix, like coffee got spilt on the floor or other things, and, you know, they need to come and address it and deal with it. And also, they said it includes windows, so if we have a broken window, it's miscellaneous. So fleet, so repairs is our big thing, and preventative maintenance is more like changing oil, rotating tires, that type of stuff. But repairs, that's a pretty big piece of the pie for repairs. It's, it's a good thing to repair our equipment because that means it was broken and it needs to get fixed to operate. It'd be nice to have more preventative maintenance so things don't break, but at the same time, you just, it just depends on your fleet age. You have a really nice fleet here in the city. I think you've done a great job funding your fleet, so it's well maintained. You have, you have decent vehicles that are rusting out and falling apart. Uplifts are when base, you know, we, we bring like a police car in, we need to put all the equipment on it, and that's very expensive and time-consuming. It's good that we do in-house though, because then fixing it is that much easier. A lot of cities, they farm that out, and then you don't know what you're gonna get when it comes back uplifted, if wires are all, I've seen some pretty bad stuff. So it's really good that we do that in-house because the mechanic that's gotta work on it, put it together, and so they know what's going on. So these are the two plants that we have. We have a wastewater treatment plant as well as a water, you know, a water plant that creates drinking water. The wastewater plant actually does all the pump stations throughout the city. I believe we have nineteen pump stations, which pumps the sewage all over to one specific location in the city, which is the treatment plant to treat it, to discharge out to the Gwamis Channel, or Gwamis Channel, Gwamis, that's the word I'm looking for, straight.
Yeah, no, you got it.
Gwamis Channel, right? Okay. Let's see, so that's pretty much, so sewage treatment, that means just the operation of the system, keep an eye on things, make sure things don't go awry. The plants are notorious, they're kind of like landfills as well. They just have good days and bad days, and sometimes they have really bad days, so, so that's, that's why there's a big chunk of the pie there. Solids handling, we have an incinerator here, the four incinerators in the state of Washington, and incinerating the solids out of the waste is, is a good way to get rid of certain chemicals, forever chemicals, the only way actually to get rid of them. So instead of, the other application is land application of solids, and we'll, we don't do that here, so we won't talk about it. The water, the water plant, so the big thing there is the checks and cleans, and that's just, this is pretty similar to just operating the system, make sure it doesn't fall offline, keeping, keeping things happening in, in good order. And there's a lot in a water plant to calibrations, verifications, equipment inspections, just to make sure nothing does fail, or we know, we try to fix it before it fails. All right, last slide. Administration, this one's kind of pretty straightforward. We have, there's ten people and two in very specific groups. Stormwater has two people, GS Asset Management has two people, administration is myself and, and Sydney, Neil, she's the administrator. And so the, those are those three, and then the rest of it's basically looking at what engineering inspectors do and splitting it up amongst those activities. And the last one is water distribution, pulled out from, not to be mistaken with the water plant. These are the people that go out and work on water mains and install services. They do locates, which is locating utilities. They don't just do water, they do all of our utilities, water, sewer, and storm. They do meter reading, they, they flush the pipes, they inspect valves, they exercise valves, and fire agents and that type of thing. And they also manage a program called cross connections, which that's, you can have siphoning happen in a water system, so you don't want things connected to your water system that can get sucked in there that you then could consume. So it's a very important program. Okay, so the division goals, so this was again, same with asking people what their specific words they thought of when they found out Public Works. These are, these are from the divisions themselves. So operations is increase customer satisfaction. I think customers are typically pretty happy, but that's, that was their goal. And then they, you're gonna see this a few times, capturing a hundred percent of our hours in Cartograph, so we've operated a system, it's a maintenance management system to track our hours, and it also helps you manage your assets. We haven't been putting a hundred percent of our time in, and I got wind of that when I got here, so starting this year, well, they have needed a little time, so I'd say March first, that they're gonna be a hundred percent entering their information into Cartograph. So those pie charts I just showed you earlier, they were pretty much an estimate based on historical knowledge. We're gonna have literally down to a fifty-minute increments of what they do going forward, so we can, we can better plan out and look at what we're doing with the, with this workforce. It is your largest department, by the way, I forgot to mention that. Solid waste, continue to implement larger can sizes, so the, or totes. The picture there shows the different sized totes. We've had one size in the city for a long time until last year, and it's important that they have the right size can so the lid stays closed, so that the contents inside don't get wet and heavy, because the heavier it is, the more you spend on disposing of it. Same with your recycling. The other thing is the, with the new development, we're seeing a development that's kind of squeezed, you know, this lot line to lot line development, just more, more development and more intensity, and what you need to keep in mind is that you gotta have a place to put your garbage cans, because if you don't, you'll end up having them underneath buildings or places where the garbage trucks can't service them. So we're working with planning to make sure that's incorporated in the, into the features that we put into new development.
Mr. Walters?
As you consider a solid waste standard for development, we may be interested in weighing in on that as well, because I'm more interested in seeing buildings for people and storefronts in our downtown, less interested in seeing places for dumpsters. And some cities have been very flexible that way. Walk around downtown Mount Vernon, you can find dumpsters inside buildings, and evidently they are able to access them. The accessibility of dumpsters should not be the highest goal. The highest goal should be building, especially in our downtown, a walkable, livable downtown. So I think we might want to review your thinking on that before we.
Sure, yeah, we can bring it back to council once we have. So I've seen the opposite where it's, it's awful, like when people have little trains, basically, they pull out with a tractor and it blocks the entirety of, in front of the place when it's garbage day, and it's.
Yes, garbage, garbage trains is another thing that we wanted to avoid, I think.
Oh, yeah, well, once they're under the building, we can't get to them, so that's the, the trade-off there. But yeah, well, I'm happy to bring that to you guys to look at, so. Facilities, create a facilities master plan, and then keep council apprised of when more than fifty thousand dollars is spent on one individual building. You guys just talked about that, some detail. We are working with finance to make sure. And the CFP, each building has about fifty, well, it has fifty thousand dollars, so we'll know hopefully to T when we cross that line, and we will inform the council when that happens, so. Fleet, again, enter all their time in Cartograph. Engineering, these are mine, to develop one set of standards for capital and private projects. We, we have standards. I think we just need to be a little more rigorous or make sure we use the same standards in each case. And so we're working on that with the, with the engineering group. And then develop a capital project intake process. I've witnessed it firsthand, that we think we have a workload, and then we just keep getting more things piled onto the engineering group, and so I kind of want to help maintain that so that we don't over-deliver or, we don't over-promise and under-deliver. I wanna, I wanna deliver what we can instead of just trying to tread water, so. GS and Asset Management, so the, they're, they're managing the grants with finance at this point. We have had, I'd say, a distributed grant management program in the city and which could, it's, it's just hard to track kind of what's, what's been spent, how much, what's the deliverables for the grant, you know, having it all kind of in one managed location is, is gonna be helpful. And then upgrading, the mapping in ArcGIS to ArcGIS Pro, that's kind of technical, we'll go forward, updating the software. So stormwater, we have a stormwater master plan that you will be bringing to council in the next few weeks for your consideration. And then we have a new permit coming, the municipal stormwater permit has additional requirements of the city, and so we need to prepare for that this year. Starts next year. And I think this is my last slide, the, the water plant distribution, of course, delivers safe drinking water is their goal, and then look for ways to save and be fiscally responsible. I think they did that for you guys, but, but in all department divisions, we're, we're always looking at that. Wastewater plant, keep improving discharge quality. They really do, they really do an amazing job there. They really are trying to, there was a, there was a permit that we were issued that was then repulled back, and we're still trying to meet those standards, even though they aren't live or required, we're, we're bent on getting there anyway, so. And then deliver all capital investments. They have a laundry list of things that they want to do this year in capital investments. And I'll just leave it with this slide, this is an updated slide. This is still kind of a, a work in progress. I just wanted to highlight a couple of things, a lot of, at least in my. my experience, a lot of public works directors get hung up on just this part. So that's why I put it at the end. Uh, but the, so for pavement and sidewalks, you see we have a little sidewalk thing with a couple of little lines drawn on there. Uh, and as well as pavement, we have a couple of pavement, um, ideas this year. What I've, uh, come to find out and it's the mayor, um, asked me to figure this out is like, how, how do we pick which road? How do we pick which sidewalk? And so come to find out, we don't really have anything written down. That's a really good detail or at least some guiding principles or side guard rails, whatever you want to call it, to figure out which ones that we are going to focus on. So I would say these are all in pretty much draft form for where the paving and the sidewalks is going to be, uh, laid this year, but we're, we're working on that this week and in the next couple of weeks. So, uh, we are starting the PCI kickoff meeting is this week with a consultant. And once we do have a, some criteria selected, we do plan to bring that to council. See you are aware of what, how we're going to pick which sidewalks and which roads are going to be paved. And crack ceiling, that's pretty much nailed down. That's going to be D Avenue, Q Avenue and 32nd. Uh, one last piece about paving is the commercial, I think it'd be really great if we could pave commercial. I know we have a master plan for commercial includes, includes a lot of multimodal, um, amenities. Uh, the estimate I heard is about 65 million at this point. So we're going to need payment before we're ever going to have $65 million of payments in bad shape on commercial. And so I'm hoping that we can get money. There's 120 million coming back from the state to be reallocated for people that didn't use their grants. And so we are meeting with WashDOT and say, how about we pave state route 20? So we'll see how that goes. Uh, I'll keep you guys apprised of that. Uh, water main replacements that is, uh, in like a dark blue on the map there. Transportation projects, 12th and the commercial roundabout, uh, with construction potentially follow this year. Uh, Q Avenue pedestrian improvements are in design. H Avenue multimodal trail, uh, is in design construction follow 2024. 16th Street improvements funded, funded by the Semiamish Nation are in design, potentially being constructed this year. And then R Avenue pedestrian improvements are in design and hopefully constructed later this year. That's it. That's my presentation.
All right. A lot of stuff and he didn't volunteer just because he was the new guy to go first on these, uh, updates to council and the public, but I appreciate setting the tone since I've told council that, uh, that, you know, we want to provide more updates from staff on each of the departments. Uh, so it's not just the committees that are up to speed on what's going on. So hopefully that you found that valuable. But before I turn over more questions to council, any member of the public want to talk public works? Okay. Counsel.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
Um, thank you first of all for the presentation. You know, even though I serve on the public works committee, it's, you know, um, it's always good to, um, see presentations first of all, but it reminds you of different little pieces, you know, uh, that you're bringing to the forefront and the enormity of the work that goes into making our city and keeping it, um, the way that it is and, you know, I think steadily run. Um, but, um, one of the things that I'm curious about and at some point in the future, Mr. Ray, I'm hoping we can do a, um, have a talk about water quality. And what I mean by that is, you know, um, forever chemicals is a big part of the discussion we're having as a global, um, you know, as a planet and trying to figure out what we're doing to mitigate it, what we're doing to help it, how and where we are in that stratus of what it can be. And I think there's some discussion of some cities that are even near us with groundwater that is very much in trouble. And so, you know, I'd just be curious as to where we are and then what are we doing? And then what might we be able to do, uh, in order to improve that? It is a work in progress and I know that, but at some point I think that it would benefit not only the council and supportive measures that you may be taking in order to move forward. Um, but also I think it would benefit the public. You know, it's, you know, water quality is everything right about now. And, you know, forever chemicals, plastics, all of those are, um, showing up in everything really. And so, you know, I, I, I think there was a study that was recently done on water quality, relatively recently done on water quality in the city itself, uh, did a great job. So I, I think that as we look forward to that, that I think that we should have, uh, a discussion or a presentation about where we are. And then just some ideas for what, uh, council and, you know, uh, we as a collective, uh, could do to enhance that quality. So I just think that that's a topic that is timely for us. And so I'm hoping at some point in the future where this committee first and then come, but I think it will benefit the public and all of us just to have that open discussion about where we are, what we're doing and, uh, how it, uh, has the potential to affect our quality of life here. Thank you.
I started my career in water quality. I'd love to spend hours with you if you'd like, but yeah, we can, we can pull something together.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
Um, I just, first of all, as a fellow newbie, I want to thank you for that presentation because it definitely taught me a lot. And, you know, as I continue to learn more. One thing that, um, I heard a lot about, uh, and even now hear a lot about is, you know, when are certain streets going to get fixed and when are sidewalks? So my question is, I heard you say that, you know, and I understand we have an evaluation for how good or bad a street is, right? But it sounded like you said that we don't really right now have a formal selection process of which streets we're going to repave or which sidewalks we're going to replace. Um, so I just had one question of how is that currently being decided right now? And then I also heard you say that you're kind of going to come up. Did I hear you say you're going to try to work towards a more formal process, uh, for that?
Yes. Yes and yes. So the, the current process, we have a, an annual PCI, it's called PCI payment index. Uh, what's the?
Condition.
Condition. Thank you. Uh, and so we have a consultant that comes and does this. It's pretty relatively inexpensive to just give us a PCI rating for just the streets. Um, from what I understand, we take that and kind of group streets into different buckets, right? Some are so far gone that you can't pave them. You have to actually raise the road, rebuild the, the subgrade and everything else. So that's a whole different topic. That's not paving. That's, that's a whole, that's a lot of, uh, construction. The, then the next chunk would be paving, the ones that are, you know, you can't really do anything else. And then there's crack ceiling, there's story ceiling, there's, there's other things that you can do. Um, what has happened in the past, from what I understand is that the city engineer has sat down with the public works director and looked at the data that we have and picked roads. Um, so I think it's important to have, you obviously look at the data, but you also need to have some guiding principles about like, where do we make these investments? Cause, uh, and the sidewalk, same thing. We don't really have a rating system for the sidewalks. We just have, we have an inventory of where we have, um, missing site segments of sidewalk. We have an inventory of sidewalks that are, you know, the trees will upheaval and stuff like that. So they're trip hazards. So we, we try to maintain, you know, get those flats that aren't trip hazards. But the, there's more than what we have money to do every year. So you have to pick a group of them somehow. And I, I think it's been pretty free flowing out of, I know I'm brand new here. So I don't know if there's a lot of happiness or not about how or which ones have been chosen to be paved, but I just, I'm used to it being that there's, there's some guarding, guiding principles that are used that are, they're agreed upon by the community about these are the ones that get done. And so, and then we'd, we'd use that to basically build your capital investment in your streets and sidewalks every year. Did I answer you both your questions?
Yeah. Actually I thought that was, yes, you did. And I have, I have, I have one other question. You also mentioned, uh, Highway 20 and Commercial Avenue. And again, sorry, new. So maybe this is a bad question. I don't know. But, um, we can't as Anacortes just repave that. The state has to be involved and do that, correct?
I, I'm tempted just to pave it, but yes, we have to involve them. It's, it is a state route. Um, I have other cities I've worked for, they let the city just go ahead and do whatever you'd like basically, as long as you're improving it. Um, but also I'd like them to help us pay for it. So there's, it's unfortunate how far gone that road is for a state route. Um, it's the one that people come and see their impression of us, you know, and they come through our town. And so, um, and it's obviously a major commercial corridor for us. So having, having at least just fresh pavement, it'll get us, you know, the 10, 15, 20 years that we need to really start looking at investing into the, the, the boulevard, uh, concept that's, that has been approved by council in the future. But we need a stopgap. But there's, I mean, I just keep looking at it. I did have the crews go out and we call it raising the iron, but we try to like, when the lids on the water valves, they're like those little four inch lids. If they're popped up or all the asphalt's gone around them, that could really mess up your, your, your rims. Like, oh, I've seen tires get completely, and it, uh, same with the sewer manhole lids. Like you really want those pretty nice and flush or else they'll get your car.
Well, thank you for going after the available funds from the state. I don't remember if you said there were 120 million or 140 million to try to get some of that fixed. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. They have to, they have to agree to the project and then, uh, and then there's a competitive process across the region, but it's a $120 million pool. And I would hope that ours ranked pretty good in their little competition for paving. We'll pave the road if they help us pay for it. It's an 80 20 loan. So, or not loan, I'm sorry, grant. So you, we'd have to have 20% to, to, to match their 80%.
And it, it's a continuing conversation with WashDOT to, uh, work on that. And if you saw from the last map, which I know you don't need to bring up again, that we have a major wa, we, the city of Anacortes has, has a major water line project that's going to happen this year. So that's an opportunity to at least do some cooperation with, uh, WashDOT and, uh, and get a little bit of, uh, a little bit of asphalt on 20. So, and, but again, we'll, we'll look to expand that where we can, working with WashDOT on that state highway. We, I hear it all the time.
It hurts my chest when somebody cuts in a fresh asphalt when it's just overlaid.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters. I think that we look forward to a robust conversation about how we pick streets and what our total unfunded liability is with respect to our streets. Because it was a number of years ago that we started spending money on streets after a period of spending basically none. And in that time, we passed a $25 car tab, which was, um, disliked by most everyone. We replaced it with a sales tax measure. We, and repealed the car tab, increased the amount of money that we were spending on streets. But we didn't increase the amount of money we were spending based on any particular math calculation as to whether that amount of money would ever allow us to maintain all of the streets in good condition. It was an experiment, I think, as public works at the time would have said, um, and, and did say, let's see how much we can get done with this dollar figure. Well, we are now still sort of struggling to spend that amount every year. And last year we spent more because in the previous year we spent less and we're okay with that balancing out. But we're only okay with that if that's the right number. If that number then gets us to a good pavement condition index of all the streets, not just our favorite streets or, you know, the arterials and collectors, which have to be priority, but can't be the only streets that we work on. So for example, on a larger scale, WashDOT prioritizes SR20 down Commercial Avenue at the lowest level. I understand because it has a concrete road base. So it, it just doesn't, it's not going to fail. It just is going to be terrible. And so it won't ever raise to the level at which they decide to spend money on it, given their current limitations on funding. Similarly, K Avenue over here in Old Town is a concrete road and is terrible, but evidently not failing. So it's very expensive to fix it. But how can our answer be, well, we're just never going to get there. You know, we're the city of Anacortes, but we are going to write off some of the streets in town? That, that I don't think is an acceptable answer. And if it means that if we review all the streets, review the pavement condition index, review how well we're doing, and we determine that we need to spend $3 million a year on streets in order to raise the pavement condition index for everybody to where we want it, then great. Let's go figure out how to get from where we are at 1.8 on average to $3 million a year. If it's $6 million a year that we need to spend to get all the streets up, that is a much more difficult ask and we're going to have to figure out something different. But we have not been engaged in those conversations. We haven't had the data. We haven't had the review of the data. And I think, well, speaking only for myself, I'm interested in knowing what that margin is. Where, how, how big is the delta from what we are spending to what we need to spend to get where we want to go? And if it's too large, then we've got to go back to the drawing board. If it's a little bit bigger, let's figure out how we can get to that number. I am concerned that staff think in terms of the number that they are given, the amount of money that they are given, and then just pick streets to, you know, figure that out. I want to broaden that conversation and have a more robust conversation about where it is we want to go and, and how it is we want to get there. And it may very well be that it's just very, very expensive and outside the realm of what we can achieve in terms of funding. If that's the case, then let's reconsider some of the factors. Maybe we can't have, you know, 60 feet of pavement. You know, maybe we need to constrain our pavement on low volume streets. Maybe we need to make other choices about sidewalks. Um, I proposed a methodology for walking through some of that, uh, a couple of years ago. And, and I continue to think that that's how the direction we need to go because I suspect, and maybe our public works director already knows, and if so, he should feel free to mention it. Um, I suspect that it is a very large number to maintain all of our streets and to bring them up to the level that we want. Uh, there was a number thrown out 10 or so years ago of $60 million, you know, which is out, outside of our ability. And that's, that's if you were to do it all at once and not be continually falling behind. But otherwise we, we are just engaged in a continual Ponzi scheme of like, let's build bigger and more roads and we'll never figure out how to pay for them. Uh, so we've, we've got to have that conversation. We also need to have the conversation this year, not next year, not anytime in the future, but this year about creating a dedicated pavement management fund into which we put the money that we pledge, 1.8 million or whatever other number, higher number that we settle on, so that that number is always available. We had this conversation at budget time and we said, okay, well, you know, we'll do that 2024. It's now 2024. So I want, I want us to make progress on these things. And there are a couple of components here that we just have never gotten to. Our new public works director has a challenge.
So a couple, I got a couple of things for you. Um, first of all, this, a city this size that does 1.8 million in, in overlays is impressive. I worked for a city three times this size and they didn't do 500,000. So you, you're investing a lot. Um, and I think it's a good thing. Um, unfortunately I would assume just from driving around for the last four months living here, you've got a lot of need out there. And I think that $60 million amount. So inflation is one thing, but roads deteriorate over time too. So if it was 10 years ago, I would assume that number was probably double just from the inflation costs as well as just the deterioration. Cause when a road goes bad, it goes bad. Like it's, that's why we're out there painting the cracks to try to keep the water out of the subbase. Cause once the subbase is damaged, the, it's a, we'll get you some numbers. So you can just see how by, 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 by the foot, how bad it gets if you don't stay on top of the roads. And, and cities in this state have been notorious for not taking care of their roads. Uh, the city is actually better than most cities I've seen. And especially the reinvestment that's been going on. You should be proud of yourselves. I think that's one of the big things that intrigued me about coming here was like, wow, these, this council actually invests in the roads, which is, uh, it's a, unfortunately it's a thing that doesn't happen typically. So, but yes, we should be able to do all those things that you'd like, uh, Councilmember Walters with the PCI rating study that comes out. At least that's what I've seen used year after year to communicate with the council. Like this is your delta of need out there. This is, you know, we can show you which roads are the ones that you have to rebuild or versus overlay versus crack seal. Um, it's, it's not that hard to do. So, um, I, we should be able to produce that for you. Like I said, the, we're meeting with the consultant to get good, uh, not good, but new data for this year. Uh, and then I'm, I'll ask them, uh, we're meeting with them out for a kickoff. Cause I haven't been involved with that side of it. Like what do, how do we take that PCI rating for each street and turn that into a report for, for the general public to digest? Cause it's very engineer-esque, uh, coming out a piece, the, the consultant that does the PCI rating. But, um, well, let me see what I can do. I've, every year I've seen that report come out and it tells you point blank which roads, how much total for the entire city, that type of thing. So we should be able to produce, produce that. And then the finance part, I'll work with the finance director on that. Um, we heard you. I, I don't know if it's been done yet or not, but we, we intend to spend probably more than 1.8 million this year, especially if we get that Commercial Avenue, big influx of state funding to really put down some asphalt. So.
All right. Other questions for Mr. Ray? Always available.
Always available.
All right. All right. Well, thank you for that. And, uh, being no further business before the council, I will adjourn tonight's meeting. Thank you.